Good morning. Today is October 7th, 2025. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboen.
Here.
Rusty Robinson. Robert Thayers absent.
Four members present, one absent. We will go now. Would you all please rise for invocation from Pastor Tim Deacon, Grace Bible Church? Mark Tim.
Let's pray together. Father God, yours is the kingdom and the power and the glory, the victory and the majesty, for everything in the heavens and the earth is yours. You, oh Lord, are the one we worship. We thank you, God, for sending your son, Jesus Christ, to die on the cross for our sin, to raise from the dead on the third day, to conquer sin and death. We thank you for sending the Holy Spirit to dwell the redeemed and to convict the world in sin and righteousness. We are so grateful, God, for the opportunity to come this morning for this meeting. I pray that you would bless it. We know that we live in a fallen world. Many things can go wrong. We pray that you would give wisdom to all the Board of Supervisors here this morning as they make important decisions. Your word tells us that in his heart, a man plans his way, but the Lord directs his steps. And so I pray that you would direct the steps of each of the leaders here to make wise decisions, to know how to, what to say yes to, what to say no to, so that the citizens of this great county can live peaceful, prosperous lives. Praise things in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Ready?
Congratulations. Of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, at this time, we're going to go on to County Service Award presentation by Carolyn Lee. Acknowledges employees that have completed various milestones of county service from the following departments: Ag Commissioner, Assessor Clerk Recorder, Board of Supervisors, County Council, Law Library, Finance, Job Training Office, Job Training Office, Public Health, Probation, and the Sheriff's Office. Carolyn, thank you.
Good morning, Chairman, Members of the Board, Carolyn Lee, Human Resources Director. I am here to present the County Service Awards. And as Chairman Verboen just mentioned, the departments that will be presenting today. Public service is more than a job. It's a calling that reflects a profound commitment to improving the lives of our community members. Every day, dedicated individuals bring their skills, time, and passion to ensure the well-being and progress of Kings County. To honor this commitment, we have the Kings County Service Awards Program, which was established in 1977, which celebrates the invaluable contributions of our employees. This program acknowledges full-time service, presenting awards after five years of continuous employment, and then in five-year increments thereafter. It's a chance to publicly recognize not just the length of service, but quality of service our workforce provides, reinforcing the significance of their efforts. Each recipient will receive a certificate highlighting their years of dedicated service. For those highlighting 10 years or more of service, will have the option to select an award, either cash or commemorative memento. These notifications have been sent to the eligible employees. Human Resources will reach out to the employees when those gifts are received. As we proceed, I will present the awardees by department. When your name is called, please come forward to receive your certificate and have your photo taken. Afterward, kindly remain in the well for a group photo with your department's recipients. The first department is the Ag Commissioners Office. 10 years, Julie Henderson.
Congratulations.
That concludes, that's the one that, that concludes for the Ag Commissioners Office. So do you want to get a photo with your department head? And he can join as well? Come on down.
We have a microphone for a speech.
Everybody must be tough on employee. Good too.
They're all, they're all retiring.
Yeah.
Linda back there was 40 years.
I know it.
Let's see. Let's get the gentleman in the back. Joe, if you can move this way. Thank you. One, two, three. Thank you.
Congratulations. For the next department, the Assessor Clerk Recorder's Office, we have Christine Lee, 10 years. We also have 10 years Susan Vargas. For the Board of Supervisors, our next department, we have 30 years Joe Nevs. And Doug Verboen will be speaking on behalf of Joe.
He's gonna speak?
You can't tell if they come down here.
Well, sit down.
20. Congratulations. Wow, look at the camera. Hey, hang on a second. We got, we got, we got some stuff for you.
Coffee's are available in the lobby for $5 if anybody. Oh, you even wrote it down?
Not me. You have people that like you here, unlike some of us. So we had one of our clerk of the board has been here a long time, too, wrote this at 2 o'clock this morning in her sleep. So Joe began his, began his career of public service through working for Stratford Public Utility District and was elected in 1994 to the Kings County Board of Supervisors for District One. Taking office in January 1995, he has worked for the, with four CAOs and 12 board members representing districts two through five, because he's number one, right? Number one.
Number one. Which finger?
Well, I've seen, I've seen one of them.
Yeah.
And with two clerk of the boards. Here are 30 years, here we are 30 years later, and he continues to represent, be a representative of the Moore and Stratford areas and currently holds the prestigious honor of being the longest-serving seated board member in the state of California. He is active within the community and was inducted into the Lee Moore High School Hall of Fame in 2000. He and his wife Kathy were chosen by Lee Moore Chamber of Commerce in 1999 for Citizen of the Year and received the salute to Ag Lee Moore Chamber of Commerce 2025 Ag Support of the Year this last Friday. Joe has been involved in many county projects over the years with a new jail facility, remodeling, county, remodeling the county hospital, remodeling of the board chambers, remodeling of the branch jail. He was presented with a 20 and 40-year dedication of the Government Center. When he isn't serving the communities and the council he is assigned, he is assigned to, you can find him cooking for county departments, rec, uh, county departments, recognitions. No, that hurt, that hurt. And the county employee barbecue and various fundraisers around the county. Congratulations to Joe on a long career, and we wish for many years to come. Thank you very much. We're not done. We're not done. What do we do? What do we do for long-term board members or employees that worked over 30 years? We retire them. No. Oh, you have, you deserve an employee hat. Well, here we have Vanna, I mean Rusty Robinson with a grocery bag full of gifts.
Thank you.
So this is.
One of a kind guaranteed to be a family heirloom.
You can find Joe in the Christmas time signing pictures of Santa Claus and making sure your kids believe in Santa Claus. I don't understand because I get coal.
Either that or the thong underwear you enjoy.
Well, Joe, thank you very much and appreciate your service.
So our next department, we have County Council Law Library. Del Lepkowitz, 15 years. Next department is Department of Finance. We have Megan Campbell, 10 years.
Megan, congratulations.
Next up, we have Department of Finance, 15 years, Elena Perez.
Can someone go get her?
And the next up we have for Department of Finance, Robert Knutson, 25 years. Eric's gonna come up and speak on behalf of.
No, no, we gotta take picture. We gotta have.
All right. Out of respect for Rob, who asked me to keep this very brief and the hour-long meeting. So as you know, Rob started with Kings County Department of Finance 25 years ago. He started in 2000 as an accountant auditor, worked his way up to the senior account auditor position. And since 2012, has been serving as the Assistant Director of Finance. He has gone through the restructuring of the county's Audit Controller and Treasury Tracttor Office, you know, being combined into the Department of Finance and has been through seven directors of finance, and I'm currently his eighth and hopefully his last. Through it all, Rob has been one constant during those time, during those years, and has become the go-to person for anything finance-related in the whole county. When I started here, everyone was like, ask Rob, ask Rob, ask Rob. So you know, he's been, you know, a wealth of knowledge for me personally. You know, 25 years is a long time. He does have that institutional knowledge, and that's something that can't be replicated without 25 years of actually being here. Personally, I can say this, you know, between him and Tammy, I wouldn't have taken this position if it wasn't for Rob being here, knowing he has been here that long and has been that constant in Department of Finance. I knew I'd have that support to be successful and everything I wanted to do personally as a Director of Finance. Rob, your knowledge, calm leadership, and unwavering support has made a huge impact, not only to the department, to the county, but to me personally as well. So, thank you.
Congratulations. All right, the next department we have is the Health Department. For 10 years, we have Michelle Cabrera. Also for 10 years, we have Juan Ramirez.
Congratulations, Juan.
Thank you very much.
Also for 10 years, we have Eva Torres. Next up for 15 years, we have Sharon Soon. All right, for our next three, I'm going to invite Rosemary up, who's going to be presenting for the 20 years, Delfina Munoz.
Morning, Delfina. I don't know where Delfina is, but I'll speak about her because she's done a lot of work. Delfina started with the Health Department in December 10th, 2004. She has been a steadfast advocate for families in the community. She has an impressive 40-year-plus history in the WIC program, including 20 years as a nutrition assistant here in Kings County WIC, and additionally in Santa Cruz County. Her decades of service reflect not only her deep knowledge of nutritional and breastfeeding support for women and children, but also her passion for empowering families and the tools and information they need to thrive. Her work has had long-lasting impacts on countless families, and her legacy is one of warmth, wisdom, and unwavering dedication. She embodies the spirit of service and has helped shape the healthier future for the community. This past year, Delfina was also recognized as one of our Public Health Champions during National Public Health Week. Thank you, Delfina, for your dedication to the residents of Kings County.
All right, next up, Rosemary's gonna be presenting Clarissa Ravello, 25 years.
Good morning. Clarissa started with Kings County on June 1st, 1999, with the Kings County Human Services Agency. She started as a social services worker in CPS 2 and moved up within the classification to a social services worker 3, then to a senior social services worker for CPS in the court and permanency planning units. In June of 2023, Clarissa became a social service supervisor in CPS overseeing multiple programs. In July of 2019, Clarissa became the First Five Program Manager for the Public Health Department, where she currently manages the First Five Funded Initiatives in addition to coordination of the Kings County First Five Commission, and has spearheaded many projects and initiatives serving children zero to five in Kings County. Clarissa has served the county for over 25 years and has dedicated her career to improving the lives of the most vulnerable children, youth, and families in Kings County. Thank you, Clarissa, for your commitment and dedication to the years of service for the families and children of Kings County. I wear the title of Executive Director, but Clarissa does all the work, so I have to acknowledge that she is holding it all together. So, thank you.
And last but not least, for the Health Department, 25 years Troy Homer Dean.
Troy started with Kings County Department of Public Health as a registered environmental health specialist in the Environmental Health Division in February of 2000. But prior to that date, Troy completed his Fresno State internship with Kings County in 97, served as a summer volunteer in 1998, and then a paid government intern before being hired as an RHS. He did a lot of volunteer time for the county. Troy has performed a variety of EHS inspections and worked on the most of the programs that EHS offers. In 2003, he was promoted to an EHS 3, and in 2004, Troy obtained his Masters in Public Health. 2006, he moved into a senior EHS position performing a variety of field and program investigation inspections. He served as a mentor and lead inspector for new EHS employees and trainees. In July of '21, Troy was promoted to the EHS Division Manager role. Troy has been a dedicated public servant, working closely with business owners, other departments, cities, and community members to assure safety in the environmental health arena. He has provided over 25 years of dedicated service. Thank you, Troy, for your commitment and dedication to the residents of Kings County.
Get a group photo for the Health Department?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Next up, we have the Job Training Office, five years, for Ariselli Madrano.
Joe.
Thank you.
They gotta wait down here.
This is our only one for JTO, so I'm gonna ask Julieta if she wants to come up and get a photo up. And Laura.
We're small and mighty.
Congratulations. All right, next up, we have the Probation Department. For five years, we have Daniela Gonzalez. Next, we have Melissa Lamar for five years.
Cold hands.
I know, thank you.
Warm heart. Next one is Marlene Ochoa, five years. For 10 years, we have Yvonne Garcia.
Take your picture. You won't give a photo to somebody? You sure? Yeah.
Also up for 10 years is Christopher Head.
Yeah.
Good job.
Next up, we have Chloe Montgomery for 10 years. Next 10 years Mercedes Musqueda. And also for 10 years, Erbito Tomayo Rodriguez. For 20 years, I'm going to be asking Leonard Baker to come up and speak on behalf of Esmeralda Chavez.
And you keep coming back. That's awesome.
Good morning. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words regarding Esmeralda supervising probation officers. She earned her bachelor's degree from Fresno State in 2003. She also completed an internship through Fresno County Probation Department. 2004, she began her career with Kings County Probation Department as a victim witness advocate, providing valuable services to victims in Kings County. 2007, Ms. Chavez became a deputy probation officer, where she provided supervision of clients, authoring a multitude of reports for the court, a liaison between the courts and probation while attending court on a daily basis. She is the epitome of an agent of change by providing guidance and direction to her clients in an effort for rehabilitation and allowing the client to grow personally and positively in the community. 2017, Ms. Chavez was promoted to Senior Deputy Probation Officer, where she was the lead officer in the department's favor unit, which is facilitating accountability, victim offender restoration. Ms. Chavez worked diligently in providing effective and productive services to the youth in Kings County in an effort to divert them from entering the criminal justice system. She was also visible in the community at various events, including events involving collaborative partners, the Board of Supervisor members, and state legislators. 2019, Ms. Chavez was selected as Kings County Probation Department's Public Safety recipient and was recognized by Chief Probation Vernon at a formal luncheon. 2023, Ms. Chavez was promoted to Supervising Deputy Probation Officer, where she supervises the post-release community supervision unit and the sex offender containment model unit, consisting of a Senior Deputy Probation Officer, six Deputy Probation Officers, and one probation tech. This unit consists of high-risk clients that require effective and consistent supervision. I want to personally thank Ms. Chavez for her years of dedication and commitment to the Kings County Probation Department, so please join me in celebrating Ms. Chavez for 20 incredible years and to the next chapter in her life. Congratulations.
Next up for 20 years, we have Mary Helen Mendoza.
Mary Helen. Congratulations, Mary. Did you have your phone?
Mary Helen has dedicated 20 years of service to the Kings County Probation Department. 20 years is not just a number, it's two decades of commitment, hard work, perseverance filled with collaboration, challenges, growth, and contributions that have assisted in shaping the department today. Ms. Mendoza received her degree from California State University Fresno. In 2000, she completed an internship program through Fresno County Probation. She was employed with the Fresno County Probation Department at the juvenile, at the juvenile facility as a group supervisor, where she was employed for five years. She left that employment and began working for Family First Inc. as a mental health rehabilitation specialist, where she worked for three years. 2005, Ms. Mendoza began her employment with the Probation Department as a Deputy Probation Officer. She has served in various capacities in this classification, such as adult field, adult court services, adult walk-in, write-in, bank, and post-release community supervision. In 2015, she was promoted to Senior Deputy Probation Officer, where she served in various capacities, including a lead officer in the juvenile field unit and as the juvenile court officer. 2019, Ms. Mendoza was promoted to Supervising Deputy Probation Officer, where she served in various capacities, including supervisor for juvenile field and court unit and adult services encompassing the walk-in, write-in, and bank caseloads. In 2024, Ms. Mendoza was promoted to Probation Division Manager and is currently responsible for oversight for the Adult Court Services Unit, pre-trial, Day Reporting Center, consisting of approximately 14 staff, sworn and non-s sworn. Ms. Mendoza belongs to various committees, including CAPC, Child Abuse Prevention Coordinating Council of Kings County, CAPSA, which is the California Association of Probation Services Administrators, and participates on the Probation Officers Association Scholarship Committee. She has given 20 years of her professional life to the Probation Department, and that speaks volumes. It tells a story of loyalty, resilience, adaptability, and a deep sense of responsibility. On behalf of myself and the county as a whole, I want to thank you. Your work has mattered, and your time has mattered. Here's to your past 20 years and to many more successful, successful years ahead. Thank you.
For 25 years, we have Michael Contreras. And for 30 years, we have Heather Stivers. That concludes the probation department, so if we can have a photo up, that would be great. You almost snuck out of this one. Congratulations. So next up, we have the Sheriff's Office. We have several for five years, so I'll start reading off the five years. We have Marissa Alvarez. Next up, Madison Archuleta. Jose Arciga Perez. Brianna Brayley. Joshua Chavez. Maria Chavez. Shelby Crippen. Valeria Espinoza. Darian Hicks. Mitchell Hunt. Donovan Porter. Ryan Ramirez. Max Raposo. Latice Sanchez. Allison Tolbert. Timmy Underwood. Mason Van Ness. Mason Vannett. And Lee Weiss Carver. For 10 years, we have Roberto Anaya. Ryan Anderson. Jonathan Brewster. Liliana Espinoza. Dakota Fosnet. Tyler Hayner. Joshua Hunt. Christopher Hutzel Martin. Trenton James. Cassandra Kling. Aurora Martinez. Jessica Rivera. Christian Rodriguez. Jessica Rivera.
For a second there, I thought Dave didn't pay his IT bill.
So again, for 10 years, we also have Christian Rodriguez. Juan Ruiz. And Gilbert Solera. For 15 years, Patricia Nunes. Jose Verdusco. Wayne Brandbrandt for 20 years. 20 years Jeffrey Campbell. Jeremiah Gilson, 20 years.
Thank you for showing up, Jeremiah. Good job. Get that on your wall.
I'm not gonna call him Jeremiah. We know him as Gilly. So Gilly started full-time at sheriff's office in May of 2005. He was promoted senior deputy in July of 2013 and sergeant in February 2021. Gilly has worked patrol, major crimes, rural crimes task force, SWAT, coroner's office, and has been assigned as our range staff member. He is currently assigned as a court liaison officer and Jeremiah oversees our boating program. Does a great job, so thank you, Jeremiah.
Maria Collier, 20 years. Eric Hoffman's 20 years. Veronica Rodriguez, 20 years. Margaret Simpson, 20 years. Aubrina Squire, 20 years. Richard Stacy, 20 years. Anthony Brandt, 25 years.
Tony started with the sheriff's office in December of 1999. He was promoted to senior deputy in December of 2011, and in January 2012, Tony became the senior deputy in the sheriff's civil division. The civil division serves processes and notices in the manner prescribed by law. Processes and notices include summons, small claims documents, restraining orders, family law documents, and other notices of orders from the court. The civil also conducts evictions and levies on wages, banks accounts, bank accounts, and other assets. In February 2023, Tony was promoted to chief civil deputy and heads the civil division. He's also been detained about one time. But congratulations, Tony. We appreciate you and all the hard work you do.
Next up, for 25 years, we have Carol Elliott. 25 years Roger Estes. 25 years Nathan Ferrier. 25 years Elsa Young. Next up, we have 30 years Sherri Long.
30 years, congratulations. Looks like you're 30.
As you could tell, Rick and I were tag teaming these this morning. Congratulations to the three of you as well. Sherri and I actually started pretty close together at the same time in the jail. I was joking about Rick and I having one ID number apart a couple of weeks ago here in the board chambers. Well, Sherri are in the same boat. We're one ID number apart on the jail roster side. I have an old jail roster from July 31, 1995, that has the four of us that are left now from 1995 still listed on there. We're gonna get to the other one soon. And so, congratulations on a great career, and I'll read a little about you. Sherri Long started with Kings County Sheriff's Office as a correctional officer in November of 1994. She promoted to senior deputy in September of 1998 and detention sergeant in November of 2003. Sherri is currently a detentions lieutenant in the jail and has worked in most different divisions and programs in the jail, which is absolutely true. Appreciate everything that you do. Appreciate having a great 30-year career with you. I know you're sticking around a little bit longer than I am. I'm a quitter and you're not. But congratulations and been super proud of you, you know, and it's been an honor to work with you, so congratulations.
Next up, we have 30 years David Robinson.
I'll be speaking. Yes. So Dave was hired in February of 1995 as a correctional officer who's making 11, 10 an hour. At the time he was promoted to deputy sheriff in 1995, he was flex-motivated deputy sheriff two in 1996. He was then promoted to senior deputy sheriff in 2000 and sheriff sergeant in 2003. He ended up going to the district attorney's office as a DA investigator in 2009, and he resigned in 2011 when he was elected to sheriff in 2010. So the sheriff has been in law enforcement for 30 years. He is in his fourth term. He oversees the entire organization of 320 employees, 40 part-time, and the Kings County Sheriff's Office annual about $65 million. Dave has been instrumental in the jail expansion, the morgue project, the new headquarters, getting all that money from Sacramento to build that new headquarters. It's been a pleasure working with you, Dave, and when you took office in 2011, you were the second youngest sheriff in the state of California. Who was the first?
Not so much anymore.
Okay.
It was my good friend Dean Groudon. He and I are three weeks apart. He's three weeks younger than me, the Lassen County sheriff, and he retired a year ago.
Okay, okay, okay. So Dave will be retiring on November 24 of this year, and I just wanted to kind of highlight Dave's career with Kings County, and you've just been a wonderful person to work with, Dave, and so we wish you all the best. And actually, so the sheriff's office does have these pins for 30 years, and so they ran over this morning to make sure I had one to give to you.
He forgot about the Air Force and the ocean, all the boating, and he started off in the haymarket. I got a microphone.
Doug, you can continue.
I'll do you justice. It's so not right. We've done a few things. We'll just call it that. We've done a few things, and it's been an absolute pleasure. True. We got room in the jail.
All right, so our next one, 35 years, we have Mary Costa.
Mary, come on down. I have a little bio to read about Mary when you come down. Let me move out of the way here so you can get your picture with Doug. That's a family heirloom right there when you get a picture with Doug. Mary, true. Mary started with the Kings County Sheriff's Office as an account clerk on September 25, 1989, the year I graduated high school. In June of 1997, her position was reclassified as a detention specialist, and she quickly promoted to senior detention specialist in August of 1997. Her position has had two more reclassifications since. First, a senior detention clerk, and now to detention's assistant. So you probably have like multiple shirts with different titles on them. Mary works in the alternative sentencing division of the jail. And so, kind of really one of the faces of our agency, because if you come into the jail lobby to our admin area or to do business with the jail side, Mary and her partner are the first two people that you see, so we appreciate you being the face of the agency. When I looked at the list from 1995, you'd already been here for a few years. You were number two out of nine civilian employees, and I have no clue how many civilian employees we have now, but it's a lot more than nine. So congratulations on an amazing career and thanks for all you do. And on a little bit of a side note, Mary was who I spoke about last week, when, you know, she's ready to retire, but she can't quite do it yet because she can't afford the medical. And so, you know, we could call it Mary's Law, whatever you guys want to call it when we get there, but congratulations on an amazing career.
Congratulations to all the award recipients. Thank you for joining us and celebrating the incredible dedication of these employees. There's a lot of experience in this one room, so congratulations.
Yeah, very good. At this time, we'll go on to unscheduled appearances. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on items of interest within the board jurisdiction and which are not already on the agenda. The board will not answer questions impromptu, and concerns or complaints will be referred to the appropriate staff. Friday, which are not on the agenda, on the agenda, members of the public will be provided an opportunity to address the board on each item as it brought up for discussion. Speakers should be limited to their comments for no more than two minutes. Do we have any speaker cards?
I have written correspondence from Katie Kohler, and I understand she's here to speak as well.
Katie, are you here?
Hello, good morning, everybody. Good morning. My name is Katie Lorena Kohler, and I'm here as a mother, first and foremost, of four beautiful children who deserve safety, justice, and the tender care of their mom. Since July 2023, my family has lived through what no parent and no child should ever endure. My children were harmed and we were held hostage at gunpoint. That kind of terror changes you forever. But what has been more devastating is how the system responded. Is how the system responded. Instead of protection, we were met with silence, obstruction, and cover-ups. Evidence has been mishandled, red flags ignored, and those who should have been pursued were shielded. As a mother, I did everything I could. I notified officials, pleaded for help, asked for protection, yet I was ignored, threatened by the district attorney, assaulted for speaking up, dragged through the system, falsely accused, and even jailed. Now I stand here on probation, paying fees for my freedom, ordered to take classes, not knowing when I'll see my babies, while six years of prison hangs over me, not because I am guilty, but because I refuse to stop speaking for my children. That is not justice. That is punishment for being a victim and a mother. The impact has been heartbreaking. My children were ripped from me, left in confusion, fear and trauma. They ask for their mom. They need their mom. All they want is love and security, the only I can give them. I'm not here to attack anyone. I'm here because I love my children and because families in this county deserve better. I ask for accountability, oversight, and resources so no other mother and no other child suffers what we have suffered. I will never give up on my babies, and I will continue to fight for them, and I...
Thank you.
The board did receive the correspondence electronically. It was placed online, and you received hard copies. Our next speaker is Jeff Gardner.
Mr. Gardner, good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Jeff Gardner, Executive Director of Kings Community Action Organization. Good morning, Chairman Verboon and members of the board supervisors. I do appreciate the opportunity to come before you today to share a new program that we are launching here in Kings County. It is called the Home Program, and the focus of the program is to assist Kings County residents to find and maintain safe and stable housing. Earlier this year, well, probably maybe a month ago, we received the award letter, which serves, that will give us opportunities to provide the program for over five years. We received a total of $6.8 million of funding, and this is coming through the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development as part of their American Rescue Plan. KCIO was only one of two agencies in the entire Central Valley to receive this funding and one of 21 in the entire state. Our focus will be to serve community members experiencing homelessness, families and individuals at risk of losing their housing, survivors of domestic violence, sexual assault, and human trafficking, and households facing extreme housing instability or financial hardship. We also will target veterans as part of this program as well. KCIO will be able to assist community members with down payments, rent payments, and support services, all with the emphasis to stop homelessness before it starts and expand housing opportunities. Just a few weeks ago, well, in the last few weeks, we have been able to assist 10 individuals from helping to prevent them from being homeless. Two of them were actually seniors over the age of 70, and we really do believe that this program will provide critical resources as families struggle with housing affordability and the lack of housing that's out in the community. So we are excited to launch this program, information about the service and the homelessness collaborative as well. And then just the last two things. I have a few more seconds. On Friday, KCIO is hosting a domestic violence awareness and resource fair at the Hanford Civic Park. We hope that you can join us. It's from 11:30 to 12:30, and we'll do a walk around the park in remembrance of those victims of domestic violence. But we also will have resources out for the community to learn about the services we provide as well as other community partners. And last but not least, on November 7, KCIO is holding a fundraiser event for our food bank. It's a Monte Carlo Casino Night. It's at the Fraternal Hall. Tickets are $75 each. KCIO provides the only food bank in all of Kings County, and so we need as much help as we can get to serve all corners of this amazing county. So we hope that you can be out there supporting us. It's gonna be a really good time. It's gonna be a great prizes out there. So I'll leave some flyers here with Catherine, and then hopefully we can get you some tickets. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I'm aware of. It doesn't look like anyone online has their hand raised.
Anybody in the audience like to add to our meeting today? Okay, we'll move on to the next item, which is approval of the minutes. Report out of closed session from regular meeting, September 30, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All items from that meeting were pulled from closed session, so there's nothing to report.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes from regular meeting, September 30, 2025. Moved by supervisor Nev, second by supervisor Robinson. Any questions from the audience? Seeing none? Madam clerk.
Joan Nev.
Yes.
Richard Malley.
Yes.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Or favorable and absent. Consent calendar. All items listed on the consent counter are considered to be All items listed on the consent counter are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. If a board member has a question, request, or additional information, or wishes to comment on an item, the vote should not be taken up until after the questions have been addressed and comments made. And the public has had an opportunity to comment on the consent counter items. What's the board's pleasure? Moved by supervisor Robinson, second by supervisor Nevs. Any questions from the audience? Any questions online? Madam Clerk, please hold a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Very good. More favorable one absent. We move on now to regular calendar, and we have Administration Kiriya Martinez. And go ahead and introduce the next candidate.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Kiriya Martinez, CEO. Before you this morning is a quarterly report for the facilities at Kettelman Hills Hazardous Waste Facility. In December 2009, the board adopted a resolution with authorized and issuing a conditional use permit for Chem Waste to operate in Kettelman Hills. As part of the conditional approval of the, of the resolution, the general manager of the facility will give quarterly reports to the board supervisor in person concerning any, concerning monitoring programs or any other additional activity on site. At this time, I invite Bob Henry. Thank you.
Where, Bob?
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Pardon me? Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Kings County Board of Supervisors report covers from July 22nd through October 6th. Past activities include on July 29th, we had Kings County Environmental Health Services at KHF, monthly unannounced facility inspection for landfills, unit B17, the MSW landfill, B18, the HAZ, and B19, which is a, we're going through the closure and ultimately closed B19, but still doing inspection. And then records review during the inspection, no violations, no area of concerns were identified during. August 21st, Congressman Valadeo was at KHF, provided the congressman with facility overview and tour. August 22nd, KHF at Kettelman City Foundation, KHF provided the seniors in town with a summertime themed luncheon. August 28th, Kings County Environmental Health Services back out at Kettelman, monthly unannounced inspection, same result, no, no violations, no area of concern. September 11th, USCPA at KHF. Facility permit engineer Jocelyn Clark was on site, permit review and inspection, no issues, no violations. September 12th, Kings County Environmental Health Service at KHF, monthly unannounced facility inspection and underground storage tank testing. For the inspection of the landfills, no issues, no violations, no area of concerns were noted. For testing, they tested our two underground diesel tanks, one's clear, one's red, and they also tested our underground gasoline tank. During the testing, the gasoline spill bucket, that's where the truck who's delivering the fuel will come in, they'll hook up, you have a spill bucket, it failed. That was immediately corrected, but during the report, I did receive a violation for the spill bucket on the gasoline tank. Thank you, thank you, Doug. No, it wasn't. We'll try to do better. September 25th, DTSC Board of Environmental Safety at KHF. If you remember, DTSC organization, they formed the Board of Environmental Safety, which oversees DTSC. KHF provided the chairman Andrew Rickstraw and board member Ingrid Broadstrom, plus staff of facility overview and tour of the site. This is good because what's going to be coming up here in a little bit is going to be our permit review, and if it's appealed, it'll go to the BES. September 30th, DTSC issues violations score, procedure scores for all facilities that have their Part B permits. KHF received a score of 0.63, and again, the lower the better. So as far as has waste facilities, we're the lowest score in the state. Quite a bit lower, so we have a better score than our competing facility. 0.63 is, is very admirable for all the regulations that we have to follow. I did have the Director of DTSC made the comment last week to us that she just wished everybody ran the facility as well as we did. So future activities, October 16th, KHF to be at the 2025 State of the County Event at the Tatchie. KHF is a silver sponsor of the event. October 23rd, KHF will be at the Kings County Public Safety Event in Kettelman City. We're a sponsor and we'll be providing food and raffle prizes, and we will have an information booth. And glad to see you back out doing it. It's a great event for the residents of Kettelman. Really like when fire departments out there with all their stuff, the sheriffs out with all their stuff, public health providing shots, flu shots for the community supervisors. Hope you guys are all, all of you are out there. So it's a good event.
Fire department's out there to watch over Joe cooking hot dog.
Cajun.
Cajun, Cajun hot dogs. I thought they were linguist. Oh, blackened, okay, blackened. October 24th, KHF to be at the Kettelman City Elementary School Carnival. Carnival is from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. KHF is providing light plants and we're a sponsor. Funds to be used for, from the carnival are to be used for the eighth grade graduation trip.
I think they need a dunk tank with supervisor Vali in it.
I like that idea.
A bunch of dollar bills I would gladly go and dump.
Okay. Lastly, permitting DTSC Part B permit renewal tentative schedule. DTSC to respond to public comments, make a final permit decision in February 26th. That may be delayed even further, depending on discussions with DTSC that we're having and others. So that might push out into the future a little bit. When it is issued, appeals will be within 30 days of the final permit decision. So if it does come out without, without everyone, or there's a good chance that we will appeal. There's a good chance that, that might take a little extra time then to work through that appeal to the BES. Okay? Any questions?
No, very good. Any questions from the board?
It was riveting, right?
Riveting.
I thought.
You've actually spiced it up a little bit with a citation.
Well, I, I, yeah, and it came from you guys. I mean, it's public health. So anyway, thank you.
So the motion takes up the presentation. Moved by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Robinson. Madam Clerk, please hold a roll. Oh, the public, you guys have any questions on the?
Come on, Chuck.
Good. No questions, we'll go forward with them.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon. Rusty Robinson.
A favorable one absent, thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is Community Development Agency, and we have Mr. Chuck Kenny today. Morning, Chuck.
Morning. Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Chuck Kenny, Community Development Agency Director. Come before you today to tell you about last night's planning commission meeting, reporting out that at the meeting, they did consider two items last night. The first item of business was conditional use permit number 25-06 for DeGroot Dairy North, which was a proposal to establish a manure separation system at an existing dairy facility at 2446 Grangeville Boulevard in Hanford. And that project was approved. The second item of business that they considered was development code text change number 668.20, which proposes an amendment to allow commercial solar to be developed on medium-high priority land, according to figure RC13 Priority Agricultural Land of 2035 Kings County General Plan in the AG40 Zone District. That item was heard, and they did approve a recommendation to come before your board to accept that change. And so those were the only items of business. There were no comments last night. Are there any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, I'll bring it back for direction.
Move to the second, sir.
Moved by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Robinson, Madam Clerk, please hold a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
A favorable one absent, take the check. We'll move on now to County Council, and we have Mary Werner. Good morning, Mary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Article 2 of Chapter 2 of the Kings County Code of Ordinances to change from a county administrative officer to a county executive officer, county management model. Kings County adopted the CAO ordinance in 1993, and it has not been updated since. In California's 58 counties, currently there are 38 with the CAO model, 17 with a CEO model, and three utilizing other models. If adopted, this ordinance amendment would formally change the title from CAO to CEO. Update and clarify the position's duties and delegate to the CEO the authority to appoint most non-elected department heads. This ordinance was previously introduced to the board on September 30, 2025. Upon board adoption summaries will be posted in accordance with law, and I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any question or comments on board? So I have a, a motion by supervisor Robinson.
Second.
Second by supervisor Valley, one at a time, or altogether? One time. Okay. We have a motion in a second. Any questions from the audience? Any questions from the board? Madam Clerk, please hold a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Okay. More favorable one absent, next item.
Thank you. This next item is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Section 2-2.1 of the Kings County Code of Ordinances to change the appointing authority of the clerk of the board from the Board of Supervisors to the county CEO. This ordinance was introduced to the board on September 30, 2025. Again, upon a board adoption, the summary will be posted in the relevant places, and I'm available for any questions.
Any comments from the public? Any comments from the board? Who is presenting? Motion by supervisor Valley. Second by supervisor Nevs, Madam Clerk, please hold a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon. Rusty Robinson.
More favorable one absent. All right.
This is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Section 2-94 of the Kings County Code of Ordinances to change the appointing authority of the Director of Finance from Board of Supervisors to the county CEO. This ordinance was introduced to the board on September 30, 2025. Upon board adoption, the summaries will be posted in accordance with law, and I'm available for any questions.
Questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Take the direction. Motion by supervisor Robinson, second by supervisor Valley, Madam Clerk, please hold a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Okay, more favorable one absent, next item.
This item is the second reading and adoption of an ordinance amending Section 2-4.1 of the Kings County Code of Ordinances to change the appointing authority of the surveyor slash road commissioner from the Board of Supervisors to the county CEO. This ordinance was introduced to the board on September 30, 2025. Upon board adoption, the summaries will be posted in accordance with law. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Seeing none, board direction? Motion by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Robinson, Madam Clerk, please hold a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon. Rusty Robinson.
Okay, more favorable one absent, thank you very much. Move on now to the library. And we have, who we have today? Ashley? Welcome.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. I'm Ashley New for the Library Manager here in Kings County. We're asking you to adopt a resolution authorizing our department to submit for, for, to submit a grant application for the La Prino Foods Company Foundation. If received, funds that, funds will be used to support furnishing and structures for the children's room in the Lemoore Library. Do you have any questions?
Very good. Any questions? Any question in the audience? Oh, we have a question from the CEO.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. Sorry, Ashley, to put you on the spot. So Ashley just started her position, and she's our newest library manager. I think she started last week.
Yeah.
So she is just, she's Tanya's replacement.
Welcome. I see Tanya didn't get up. She's like, ah, go ahead.
Well, because Ashley's, you know.
The art of delegation.
Very good. Well, welcome. We wish you all the best.
Good morning, Chair.
Moved by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Robinson, Madam Clerk, please hold a roll. Did I ask the audience if they had any questions?
I thought you did, but I.
You ask them if they had a library card?
Well, I don't have one.
Do you?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Okay, more favorable one absent, thank you.
Thank you.
That was easy for you. We'll make one difficult just for fun. Move on now to probation department. Good morning.
Good morning. Morning, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, Wendy Dibble, Deputy Probation Officer and current Director of the Branch Juvenile Facility. As a county with a youth detention facility, we are required by law, specifically Welfare and Institutions Code, Section 208.1 Parent A, to provide the youth under our care and supervision with the opportunity to regularly communicate with their family members and other pro-social individuals who can support the youth in their rehabilitation. The youth often utilize telephones during the recreational time. Additionally, according to Title 15 Minimum Standards for Juvenile Facilities, Section 1370, 76, also requires us to provide youth with access to telephone communications. The Network Communications International Corporation is qualified to provide these required correctional telephone and communication systems. There is no fiscal impact to the County General Fund as the cost of these services are allocated in the fiscal year 2025, 2026, adopted budget and budget unit 23,300 Juvenile Treatment Center. I would, however, like to point out an error that I was, that I discovered yesterday in the agreement. Somewhere between the probation department and the risk department, the word Kings was changed to Madera. For accuracy, we would like to amend the contract on the record to read County of Kings on the second line of the agreement where it reads County of Madera. We are asking you to approve the agreement with the Network Communications International Corporation for in custody youth telephone and communication services with the recommended changes as previously referenced, retroactively effective from July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2030. Thank you for your time and consideration of our request. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Wendy. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience? Online on this one, anybody online to hand up? I think. What's the board's pleasure?
Move with the amendment, Chair.
Moved by supervisor Nevs, second by supervisor Robinson, Madam Clerk, please hold a roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
More favorable one absent, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to Public Health Department, and who's going to make that presentation today? Heather. It's all yours.
I'm just here to present Nicole Fisher, our supervising public health nurse.
All right. Do you know how the delegation works?
It's a theme today. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Today, the Kings County Department of Public Health, along with the Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Program, respectively request your support in adopting a resolution to proclaim October 2025 as Breast Cancer Awareness Month in Kings County. Worldwide, Breast Cancer Awareness Month is dedicated to promoting early detection and regular screening, educating the public about breast cancer and its risk factors, and supporting individuals currently undergoing treatment. Breast cancer remains one of the most diagnosed cancers among women in the United States. In 2025 alone, it is estimated there will be more than 300,000 new cases of invasive breast cancer in women and over 2,800 new cases of men across the country. These numbers highlight the urgent need for continued awareness, education, and support within our communities. In honor of Breast Cancer Awareness Month, our Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Program has launched a social media campaign titled Kings Cares: Prevention, Partnership, and Power. This campaign focuses on promoting prevention and early detection, increasing access to screenings, shared educational information about breastfeeding and breast health, and uplifting local survivor stories. This initiative is conducted in collaboration and to support our community partners, such as the Tulare Kings Breastfeeding Coalition, Links for Life, Kings County, and the California Department of Public Health, Every Woman Counts Program. I know Juan is going around and he has some pink ribbons. We also put them in the breezeway for the community to take and show their support. I would like to introduce now Nancy Hitchcock, a past public health, or public health department, public health nurse, and an active member of Links for Life, Kings County, to share a few words.
Right, Nancy? Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Chairman and members of the board, for having me today. As you know, October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and I am here representing Kings County Links for Life. Breast cancer is the second highest cancer amongst women, only second to skin cancer. Breast cancer incidence has increased in California with significant increase with the Asian-American and Pacific Islanders. Cancer, the greatest increase in breast cancer was observed amongst women 50 and under. Links for Life has seen a many, a large increase in our referral. Links for Life has seen a many, a large increase in our referrals for women in their twenties. Thirty-six percent of female breast cancer patients in California first is, they find it themselves and then they go to the doctor. So I think we really need to encourage our education. The men represent one percent of all breast cancer patients and five hundred and eighty men die a year from breast cancer. Although it is low in numbers, it is the most aggressive breast cancer. So when we talk about breast exams, that means men and women. The links, our Links for Life mission here in Kings County is early detection and treatment. And there is a ninety-nine percent survival rate if it is detected early and treated. So that is our mission. Links for Life here in Kings County provides diagnostic mammograms, ultrasounds, needle biopsies to the underinsured and uninsured men and women in Kings County. We also educate breast health whenever and wherever we are invited. And we do promote our Look Your Best program, which provides beanies, wigs, and therapeutic sleeves to any cancer patient in Kings County, not just breast cancer, to any cancer patient. I believe that Links for Life is providing a very necessary public health service in your county. And we are asking for more support from the Kings County Public Health Department. Thank you. Any questions?
Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience?
Thank you. And Mr. Nevs, we will see you on the fourteenth and we appreciate your continued support. Okay, and the, and the style show.
So finally, we would like to recognize that this month is not only a time for raising awareness and education, but also a time to honor and encourage those in the community who have faced breast cancer and to offer support and strength to those who are currently in their fight against breast cancer. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair. Moved by supervisor Nevs. Second by supervisor Robinson. Not appropriate for the whole role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
We have a presentation for a resolution down in the well, so.
We would also like to invite any of the department heads here to come down and take a picture too, on behalf of the entire county.
Yes, suck it in, turn around. There is no best side. Sorry. One, two, three. One's more. Thank you very much.
Thanks, chief. We have one more item from the health department and that is, who's going to do that?
Hi, good morning, supervisors and chairman. We're here today with an item from our Environmental Health Services Division. I'd like to introduce Liliana Stransky, the department supervising environmental health specialist, who'll be presenting on our current local primacy agency delegation program and our proposal to end the LPA delegation and request the return of the program to the State Waters Resources Board. Liliana has been overseeing the program, so she has quite a bit of information.
Thank you. Good morning, Liliana.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity. I'll get right to it. I know Melissa is moving the slides for me, so if we go to slide number two. Just to give you a little bit of history on the program. Environmental Health Services serves as a local primacy agency for the county. The LPA delegation was established in nineteen ninety-three by the Water Board. In twenty fourteen, revised LPA delegation agreements were issued by the board. And in April of that same year, the board of supervisors approved EHS to continue with the LPA delegation. Just a little bit of background, next slide. Couple of definitions. For a public water system, one is, a public water system has between fifteen and a hundred and ninety-nine service connections and serves twenty-five or more individuals at least sixty years in a calendar year. Second definition is for smaller systems that have between four and fourteen service connections serving less than twenty-five individuals throughout the year. There are four categories total. We have communities, non-transient, non-communities, transient, non-communities, and local small systems with, which I mentioned were between the four and fourteen service connections. And we'll look at examples in the next slide. The water system inventory has fluctuated over the years. Currently, we have thirty-eight public water systems in Kings. How they are regulated, under two hundred service connections, there's local jurisdiction with some state oversight. And over two hundred service connections, they're, they're directly under the water board's purview. Next, oh, thank you, Melissa. In this slide, you'd see the breakdown of the thirty-eight public water systems that we have in Kings. Three communities, Sunset Vista Mobile Home Park, one of them Hardwick Community, and Samuel's House are the three under this category. We have eleven non-transient, non-communities. Examples of those are the rural schools and businesses. Island Union District, Kings River Hardwick, Nichols Farms, Neto Ag are examples of the businesses. We have a total of twenty-four transient, non-communities, churches, rural mini-marts, and public parks are three parks. Kingston, Leighton, Burrus Park, and Hickey Park are under this category. This, the twenty-four tripled in October of twenty twenty three, twenty twenty three. AB sixteen twenty-seven amended the Health and Safety Code, removing a former exemption for those that held food vending permits for the drinking water. And so it added all of the rural deli marts, farmer's mini-mart, also delis that are tied to gas stations. And so now we've added this number to twenty-four. Next slide. These are the small systems that I mentioned earlier, local water systems. We only have four and they're listed here. These, the state does not have any oversight over these systems. And they have the least number of monitoring requirements, testing for potability every quarter and annual nitrates, but not requiring us to report to the state for these systems. Next slide. We will show you the breakdown of the total number of systems in the state of California that are regulated and the percentage that we hold, which is thirty-eight, less than one percent are here in the county. But the total in California is seven thousand three hundred and sixty-nine. And you see the breakdown of the categories here, and all of them were less than one percent. Okay, next slide. Here we show all of the counties that formerly held the LPA delegation and have given it back to the state. Fresno, Toowalme, San Mateo, Tulare County, Los Angeles, San Diego, and Monterey just completed their, their transfer last month in September of twenty twenty-five. So out of fifty-eight counties, there are currently only twenty-six left. We know of at least three others that are looking to return the program back to the state, Madera, Mono, and Stanislas. But we don't know where they're at in the process. Next slide. Just to touch on the reasons why we're here before you. We have faced budgetary constraints, deficits, staffing limitations, and mandates. And just to touch on these briefly, budgetary constraints, in twenty fourteen, the Water Board awarded a one-time grant of ninety-one thousand dollars that did little to offset costs in the county. Deficits, we rely on permit fees that really don't cover the, the cost of running the program. And we will look at, at the shortfall in a minute. Then staffing limitations, we have been very fortunate to start growing our staff. We have a lot of new trainees and so there's still entry level positions that need years of training before they can do some of the more complex programs, which is, one of them is the water. For such a small inventory, there's a lot that goes on to, to manage the program. Increasing regulatory mandates, this is just an ongoing, an ongoing process that we have to continue to do, demanding more training, data management, enforcement, tracking, and state reporting. So we'll move to the next slide. And here you see the program annual shortfall. Something to point out in, in the fee increase between twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five. You will note that that increase deals with the category of transient, non-community systems that tripled and gave us a little bit more in fee collection. However, it still did very little for, with the shortfall. And with labor expense continuing to increase year after year, we, we will see that shortfall continue to increase. Next slide. It's just highlighting the list of mandates that we continue to face. There's always new, I mean, there's always new constituents that become a concern for drinking water and new regulation that has to be implemented and enforced. And how this impacts our ability to continue with the program is if our systems don't meet the standards that are set, then we have to continue to issue enforcement. And these are just some of the highlights of the new ones that have come in place. Next slide. When I first started doing water, there was only one website that I would go in and look over and manage the data entry for water systems. And that was the one on the first slide, SidWIS, Safe Drinking Water Information System. There since has been an increase of databases that we have to monitor, enter information, upload reports, and continue to, to learn. And that has increased by the list that you see here. And in a future, near future, WaterTap, which we don't know too much about, but this list also just continues to increase. Next slide. So what are the requirements to end the delegation? First of all is to obtain approval from the board. The second step would be to formally notify the Water Board and provide them with a hundred and twenty-day advance notice in writing, as per the California Health and Safety Code. The third step would be to coordinate the transition plan with Water Board staff and then finalize the deactivation of water systems. And that will be over a period of time to be worked out in the transition plan. Next slide. This is a busy slide, but it mainly just highlights the steps of preparing our notification for the operators, choosing the timeframe of when to send the program back and then finalize notifications to the operators stating what are the steps that are required. And so you'll see those highlighted here. Next slide. Sending, giving the program back to the state does not mean that we stop our role in supporting our local operators. Most of the operators also have other programs that we regulate in place. I mentioned Island School District, Kings River Hardwick, Nichols Farms. We do routine inspections of these facilities, not just for water, but for all of the other programs under COOPA, food safety. And so we continue to be a presence in, with the operators. And so we do not go away. For the water, how would we support is to issue water safety alerts and distribute public notices during emergencies such as water outages, report public complaints to the Water Board. So serve as the intermediary between the operators and the Water Board, communicate regulatory changes at the local level, and respond to any concerns that impact the community. We communicate regularly with the public when they call about a private water well and concerns. You know, we provide them the, the same information that we would our operators. Next slide really concludes our presentation and we will open it up to questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions from the board? Any questions from the audience?
I have a question to Chuck. How does this tie into Sigma? We have to be aware of the water quality within, underneath Sigma guidelines. And so we're, I understand we're not, it's mostly a financial situation here, right? The basic funding mandate, we can't afford to do it. The state will pick up the funding part of it, but we don't step out of the process, correct?
My understanding of this is that you're transferring reporting requirements from the local to the state. Everything else will be staying same. So as far as Sigma, we're, we're still staying status quo.
And only, only time I worked with the state when it came to water was Hardwick, when we could have had a new well drilled in four days and they took a year. So I don't want to hurt our residents by getting in, you know, stepping out of the way and making a bigger problem, then it's not going to do that, correct?
Absolutely. It took a year with your presence and having your involvement with the community. It did take longer than any of us would have liked, but I think that needs to continue to be how we work together with our community members to assist.
Thank you very much. If there's no questions or comments, we'll go ahead and go back to board direction. We go, sorry, good. Motion by supervisor Nevs. Second by supervisor Valley, Rosemary, you have another comment?
No, I was just gonna ask you to. Do it. Save us thirty thousand dollars.
Hey, if there's no question, did I ask the, I asked the audience, any comments from the audience? Looking from the board, not appropriate for the whole role.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley. Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Okay, all favor one absent. We'll move on now to board member comments and reports. Supervisor Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Let's see, last Tuesday afternoon, attended the Fresno State, State of the Fresno State of the County Luncheon. Chairman Verboon, thank you, sir. And thank you for the invitation from Supervisor Nathan Mansick. It was, it was well done and Buddy Mendez never disappoints. Wednesday, received a tour of the State of the Art Kings County Mall with supervisors and city and county officials. Following, attended city-county coordination meetings with supervisors, mayors from Hanford, Lemoore, Corcoran, Avonel. This exchange of ideas is something fairly rare in politics, so we're grateful for that. And Mayor Sid Palmeron from Corcoran is almost as much fun as Chairman Verboon. Thursday, attended a fundraiser in Tulare for Assemblywoman Ally Macedo. It was successful. It was a full house with mayors, councilmen, and supervisors from Fresno to Porville. Ally continues to get promoted in Sacramento. Ally continues to get promoted in Sacramento for tireless efforts for the Valley. And then Friday, my wife and I attended the Lemoore Chamber of Commerce Dinner to celebrate Agriculture of the Year, Keenan Farms. And Ag Supporter of the Year, our own Supervisor Nev, so congratulations to Supervisor Nev again. Thank you, sir.
Hey, Mr. Valley.
Mr. Chair, I also attended the City-City Coordinating Dinner. On Friday afternoon, I attended the swearing ceremony for new Superior Court Judge Gondo Jim Trevino. That was very nice. Also, Wednesday morning was my second segment on KNTH, gave a couple of you guys a shout out there that morning. So thank you, Catherine, for sending the email out. I saw that. That'll be helpful. I want to talk about your guys' districts entirely about mine. Let's get some positive out there. Word on on this going on in Kings County. And then lastly, Monday, I'll be taking off with Ray Ortiz on the Central Valley Honor Flight. Three days in DC, and I'm looking forward to to taking that gentleman. I don't know if I shared with everybody, but a real quick story. My father, did I just tell the story here already? Thank you. My father, Richard Valley, is a Vietnam veteran. He made it home fine, just fine. Came home, married my mom, mom got pregnant. Me, and about three months before I was born, my father drowned at Bass Lake in a boating accident on Easter. And so the day of my father's funeral in Corcoran, the Army Detail, something happened. They weren't going to make it to give the military honors. And so my family put a word out around Corcoran. They've been looking for somebody to come and, you know, do some of the honors for my fathers. And this gentleman, Ray Ortiz, that I'm going to take, he answered the call. He showed up, put on his full uniform. And he actually folded the flag off my dad's casket, presented it to my mother. I have this flag to this day. I never knew the story until I met him last year at the Memorial Day Ceremony. When his wife came up to me with him and introduced him to me. The other thing about that story is he had his orders in hand. It was his last day, flew them the next day. After my dad's funeral, Mr. Ortiz shipped off to Vietnam. So it takes time to put on his uniform on his last day and go in somewhere where he didn't know if he was going to come back or not. Men a lot. So when his wife called me a month and a half ago and said, Richard, husband wants to ask you this favor. He knows you're a busy man. I'm like, whatever you ask, I'm gonna say yes. So just ask. And he asked if I'd be the guardian escort. So we're going, and I look forward to the three days where I got to bunk with him. I was staying on the reach, make sure he takes all his meds. And I'm gonna push him around the wheelchair for three days.
Very good. Thank you for doing that. Thanks. What about the Nevs?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I too want to thank everybody for attending both the City-City Coordinating Meeting and the salute to agriculture. It was a very nice evening. On Friday, attended the American Legion Breakfast in Lemoore, biscuits and gravy, one of my favorites. Attended the Cars and Cops Show, Car Show in downtown Lemoore. The President Verboen was there and had a nice, nice show in downtown Lemoore, very nice compared to the the suckers fields of the past. And then on Sunday, attended the MIQ Fall Festival. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair.
I got my trophy in office. You want to take a picture with it?
Yeah. I'll put that on my bucket list.
All right. At this time, we're gonna go to, oh, sorry, Kerry is still here. We'll move on now to Staff Updates and Reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We actually do have two staff updates. I'll turn it over to Public Works first, and then I have a staff update.
What about Mitchell?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board, Mitchell Cabrera, Chief Engineer, Road Commissioner with the Public Works Department. Here this morning to give a in-detail update on the Houston Avenue Bridge Replacement Project. Just what we've done so far, where we're at, and what we're looking at timeline-wise to get this project completed. So NEPA was cleared July twenty-first of this year. We also received authorization to begin the right-of-way phase at the end of August. Last week, before your board was an item to approve the appraisal reports, which got approved. So now County Council is reviewing the offer packages, right-of-way agreements, and deeds that will be required for temporary construction easements, slope easements. Everything needed to get this project built. Plans are at ninety percent completion. Comments from our department have been sent back to the consultant, so we're scheduled to receive a hundred percent completed plans. Early November of this year for the project. We've cleared utility conflicts with Southern California Edison. And permitting-wise, the Central Valley Flood Protection Board, we received a letter indicating additional comments and review. County has sent our requested documentation back, and we're awaiting response from the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. Fish and Wildlife, the permit was submitted end of May of this year. Comments received. We sent the letter back on July eighth of this year, and we're still waiting for the response from CDFW, so Fish and Wildlife. The California Water Board, that certification has been received and completed. The Army Corps Permit, Nationwide Permit, has been received and completed. And now we're working on getting necessary mitigation credits between seventy and ninety thousand. Which are a requirement for the environmental clearance due to the disturbance of the waterway. So we're working with our consultant to find an environmental bank that would sell those mitigation credits. Right-of-way is anticipated to be complete by April of twenty twenty-six. That would be right-of-way certification, having all the acquisitions, everything ready and in place. So the anticipated construction following the accelerated schedule is for August of twenty twenty-six, the start of construction. Bearing in mind that right-of-way and permits could potentially impact the construction start date. A lot of the environmental constraints regarding the actual channel construction windows. Any environmentally sensitive birds, wildlife out there could potentially move that start time. But if everything goes as planned, August twenty twenty-six, we should be starting construction on this bridge.
And what do you, how long do you think it'll take once you start construction? Two months, three months?
Six months. Yeah, just because there are a lot of unknowns with with the bridge projects. We just started the Sixteenth Avenue Bridge Replacement last week, found a bunch of lines. That nobody knew what they were under there, environmental issues too. We have a biologist going out and monitoring the Houston. Our Roads Department is gonna have to send someone out there like every two days to make sure no birds have nested under that bridge. So there are a lot of requirements and issues we're dealing with. So August twenty twenty-six should be the start, and six months from there.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, so Kerry Martinez, the update that I have is that the county received an agreement from the City of Avonale for fire services that was signed by the City of Avonale with the term of July first, twenty twenty-four through July first of twenty twenty-eight. Which contains a almost eighteen-month termination clause, which was the original contract that was executed by the Board on August twelfth. So I wanted to give your Board the verbal update.
Now we have agenda is the taken where we're going.
So if this, another reason why I was bringing it up for your Board, if I would get direction on what are the next steps? Because your Board did take an action last week to withdraw. That is the most recent action. So it doesn't essentially make the agreement valid until your Board reaffirms their position.
I'll defer to the Supervisor of that District.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate the update, because I'm seeing a social media post that they, I mean, looks like cities moved on that. They're telling the community that there is a contract, so we ought to get that word out just for clarification. And as far as going back for thirty days, yes, I'm up for that. But again, next week, I'll be in DC. I'd like to come back also and have time to talk to some folks in Avonale's chair. Do you mind if we did that Tuesday the twenty eighth?
Does that fall within the timeline?
Yes.
I'm okay with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. You do the vote on that, or just a?
That was just direction.
Okay, we're good. Thank you. That's it, Kerry?
I'm Miss Board Correspondent. So the Board did receive correspondence dated September eighth from the Community Corrections regarding the completion of the twenty-five, twenty-six comprehensive inspection of the probation department detention facilities. The Board also received correspondence dated October second from Public Health regarding the first West Nile virus-related death in Kings County. For upcoming events, the public safety event in Kettleman Park will be held on October twenty-third from five to seven PM. Behavioral Health will host its mental health family member, family member support group tonight, Tuesday, October seventh, from five-thirty to seven-thirty here on site. Kings County Library will host its movie time at the Kettleman Branch tomorrow, Wednesday, October eighth, from one to three. And Kings County, in partnership with the Economic Development Corporation, will host the twenty twenty-five State of the County Event on October sixteenth, from eleven AM to one thirty PM. Tickets can be purchased online. There's still a few left for upcoming agenda items. The following agenda items are for October fourteenth. Administration has an item regarding a resolution for opposing Proposition Fifty. Ag has one item regarding a service agreement for the glass sharpshooter treatment with bark pest control. Health has one item on an appointment to the Ambulance Commission. HR has an item, has continued an item on the County Service Award Presentation. Job Training has an item on an MOU with the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act Partners. Probation has an item on a counseling center agreement. Public Works has three items, the Fire Station Number Four access driveway notice of completion. And the Kings County Bridge Maintenance Program and Approval of Consultant Agreement and Construction Management Agreement. And the Construction Agreement for the Hanford and Library Branch remodel project. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's also the eighteen-two on pass on the twenty-third. Do you have a time for them?
So tentatively, we're looking at four PM for the groundbreaking of the AT&amp;T broadband project in Kettleman. It'll take place the same day as the public safety event, a little bit sooner.
Yeah, so what time do your programs are? Five or four?
Five.
Five.
But I got a good crew. I'll just get them all started in a bit.
Yeah, we figured we might as well piggyback on what you guys are doing for that, because everybody would be in the same place, same time, and then they'll be around to answer questions throughout the event.
Correct. So I think it'd be a night.
Yeah.
Four, four o'clock, on the twenty-third, and then the event opens up at five, but there's always people.
Yeah, and they're gonna actually have some of the fiber on this place and see what it looks like. And it'll be tied into our public work project with the sidewalks, so we do one thing at one time to help that community out.
And probably some maps of.
Yeah.
It could be, I think it's a good addition, and I think that adds to the service part of that public safety.
I think it helps with public safety too, because if we have a tower in an area that gives us fiber to that tower for communication. That it? Kerry, are you good?
That concludes our report. Yes, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll defer over to County Council, Mary Lerner, for a little session.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The first item is Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine. D one, Conference of Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation. Name of case, Carla Pade V. County of Kings, U.S. District Court, Case Number one two zero C V zero zero six four four K E S S K O. Item number two, Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine. Conference of Legal Counsel, Anticipated Litigation, Significant Exposure to Litigation pursuant to Paragraph Two of Subdivision D of Section five four nine five six point nine of the Government Code, three cases. Item three, Government Code Section five four nine five seven point six. Conference of Labor Negotiators, Agency Designated Representatives, Keria Martinez, Carolyn Lees, Shay Johnson, and Weaver Cassidy Whitmore. Employee Organizations, General and Supervisors Units, Clocia, Blue Collar, SEIU, Detention Deputies, Firefighters, Deputy Sheriffs, Probation Officers, and Prosecutors Associations, and Unrepresented Management. Item four, Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine D one. Conference of Legal Counsel, Existing Litigation. Name of case, Freddie Claire V. County of Kings, U.S. District Court, Case Number one two zero C V zero one seven nine three J L T S K O. Item number five, Government Code Section five four nine five seven. Public Employee Appointment slash Employment Title Veteran Service Officer, Public Guardian. And I'll turn it back to the Chair for any public comment.
Okay, thank you very much. Any public comment this time? Double comment. Okay, we will adjourn, and Supervisor Valley, enjoy your trip. Looking forward to a full report when we come back. Thank you. Next scheduled Board meeting will be October fourteenth, nine AM. Thank you very much.